Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting this March 11th, 2025. I'm pleased today that we have Reverend James Williams with us. He's from Grace Resurrection Methodist Church. He will be providing our invocation. That invocation will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Officer Joshua Worthy. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
Thank you. Let us pray. Oh God, we first come into your presence this day with Thanksgiving. We thank you, Lord, for a free country and a country we're living in where there is peace. Lord, we pray for those who are not that fortunate this day. We thank you, Lord, that you are a supernatural God, but also one of order and process. And we ask this day that your hand and your guidance would be in this room. I pray for each of the commissioners, their work. Lord, we thank you for their service. We thank you for their sacrifices they make for this great city. And we ask, oh God, today that things would go smoothly and that good decisions would be made for the good of the whole. And we come before you praying all of these things through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate that invocation. Our meeting is now called to order. We have two presentations before us. The first one is to present the 2024 Silver Eagle Award on behalf of Cobb's management team. And that will be brought by our DOT Director Drew Wrestler.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners and County Manager. It is my pleasure to present the annual Cobb County Silver Eagle Award. This award program celebrates its 30th awardee with today's announcement recognizing the Cobb County Department Head who has demonstrated teamwork and outstanding leadership among the department head team throughout the year. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to thank Ross Cavett and Kimberly Limley for their assistance on the award committee. Today's award celebrates the leadership of a director that, in the words of one nomination, "has demonstrated unwavering dedication, outstanding leadership, and commitment to supporting all departments." This leader goes above and beyond in every aspect of their role. Leading by example, consistently offering guidance, encouragement, and hands-on support to ensure every team can perform at its best. Another nomination reads that today's awardee will do whatever it takes to get the job done and consistently works tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure a successful outcome. I believe that this person's ability to lead with humility and dedication have been instrumental in creating a positive and productive work environment for his staff as well as for those of us who have an opportunity to work with him and his team. With that, it is my honor to present the 2024 Silver Eagle Award to Parks Director Michael Branley.
Okay, who's minding the store? First off, thank you very much. This is an honor, very unexpected. Everything I do, I do for Cobb County. And one of the things I try to instill in our staff is the same thing as we do what we do when we do it for Cobb County. Any of our departments that reach out specifically to us, I always try to make it sure that they understand that they're helping everyone, including all of our other departments. So it's nice to see this. I appreciate. The fellow department heads who voted for me, it takes a village. Sometimes I just try not to be the village idiot. But I appreciate it. And same goes back for our Commissioners, Chairwoman, County Manager, Deputy County Manager, my boss. Hello, Jatine. Thank you for everything y'all do to help me out on a daily basis because it does take all of us. So I appreciate, I appreciate all of this and thank you very much.
Congratulations, Michael, and it's good to see you have a team of support. With that, we're going to go ahead and go into our second presentation, which is to present a proclamation designating March 2025 as procurement month in Cobb County. Anyone here who's a part of this presentation, please join me up front. Good morning. You also have a team of support with you. Well, whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business. And whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, the procurement services department adds value by executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments. And whereas procurement professionals have a tremendous influence on economic conditions in the county with a cumulative purchasing power exceeding $300 million annually. The procurement services department in Cobb is fully committed to providing high caliber strategic, logistical, and operational support for all of our departments. And whereas the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing and the state of Georgia have proclaimed March as procurement month to expand awareness of the procurement professional's role. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as procurement month in Cobb County to recognize the important role these professionals have in our community. This the 11th day of March 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, for taking time out to recognize all of the public procurement professionals across the nation. This is a very special month for us, a month that recognizes the value and importance that we bring to the table in creating efficiencies and helping to build better government. So thank you to all the men and women that wear the procurement hat, and thank you for my staff as well. And thanks for the proclamation and salute to all of the public procurement practitioners across our great country.
Thank you so much. And that was stated by Roger Ball, their Director. I must say, for a $300 million impact, if I divide that by 10, that means each of you are worth about $30 million of economic impact to the county, and that is not insignificant. With that, you may want to go in the middle with that. Alrighty, that concludes our presentations for this morning. We are now at our first public comment.
Yes, Chairwoman, as the board provides the podium, excuse me, for public comment, it's appropriate to review some of those related meeting rules. When you come forward, please state your name. And if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic, for our audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb government. And there's a timer on the podium, detractor three minutes. Mr. Stevenson, you're speaker.
Good morning, Tracy Stevenson. I just thought today, since it is election day and the primary runoff, be a good day to do a recap, recapulate, recapitulate, a recap of what's been going on the last two years. I think we're nearing the end of this experiment, as bad as it was. I did indeed get involved in the political process and found out how awful that was. I don't think much of it, may not ever get involved in it again, I don't know. But I do go back and I look at two years ago, when this started, we had an easier path to get away. But we wasted millions of dollars, anywhere from $1.5 to $5 million in litigation, redoing elections and so forth, that has really gotten us to where we were two years ago. I think that we should learn from this. We should do better. I know I've personally spoken from this podium for over a year on exactly this. We could have given up and made this thing work so much better two years ago. I guess the thing that bothers me the most as I look at all of this is that especially this restrictive schedule for the campaigning of this election was horrible. It gave, anybody that was a political outsider had no chance. An incumbent had the best chance. The other people that are running that had political chops had some aims that helped them a whole lot. I mean, we actually had to qualify on December 18th, a week before Christmas. So therefore, the first two weeks of our campaign season were gone. We couldn't campaign that week because nobody cared. The week after that, nobody cared. And the week after that, of course, you know, the January 1st was in the way. So essentially, we have given up our rights to two commission seats with this abortion that we've been through for two years. We're giving up two commission seats based on 4% of the county turning out to vote. Now, I don't know about y'all, but I've seen some bad turnout in elections in my time. But this just continues to put a bad mark and a black checkmark beside this whole process. We've wasted two years. We didn't get anything out of it except for a lot of argument and wasting of dollars. We've run a terrible campaign season here in this runoff, well, in this primary, and now a runoff today. I've listened to all the candidates. I've spoken to all of them. And I can tell you, nobody comes up with a platform. I got one that wants to tell you pet, which is policy, haven't heard any. Empathy, don't really, I know what empathy is, but I don't know what that means in the context of politics. And then transparency. First thing that should work is, if I've got a policy, I should make that transparent and it should be empathetic. I don't think we're splitting any atoms there trying to figure that one out. But yet I have seen no policies. We've got another candidate that wants, that has spoken as a school board member that was interested in taking away the senior school tax exemption. He denies it now. The record's there. And we've got another candidate, I just don't know what the hell she's about. I've got no clue. So in District 2, we're clueless. In District 4, I don't think it's a stretch to say Ms. Sheffield will win in a landslide over there. She's got good support for her community. That's the way it's supposed to work. But at the end of the day, this has been a terrible process. It's been a terrible injustice to the entire county. And 4% of the people in this county are going to decide two of five seats. That's just wrong. Thank you.
Mr. Harfoot?
My name's Craig Harfoot. Good morning, Commissioners. I emailed you some stuff over the weekend. The world's not looking good. Spring is early and it's going to freeze again. It's going to kill off some more crops. I didn't get blueberries last year, probably not this year either. But anyway, I mean, this is just a barometer for what's going to happen broader for people that are in production. But anyhow, I sent you these things about, the last meeting was really good about the host and all that. You explained all kinds of aspects of it. So I went and I dug deep into it. I don't think we should be going for a splosh because splosh are specific to widening roads. And widening roads seems to be getting people killed now on pedestrian crosswalks. Atlanta just shut down a pedestrian crosswalk because somebody got killed. The lost seems like you should be putting that in because you can give property tax relief. You can do maintenance. You can do whatever. You don't have to steal from the water fund. It's, there's a lot of aspects to it that could be beneficial and it could be discussed with the community. It doesn't prevent you from doing some project you want to do. And it doesn't say that you gotta use it for this, you know? And that's, that's a good thing. And the school board should probably be looking. thing. And the school board should probably be looking at it too, because the way the stock market's going, and then the housing market's going, I see all these, everybody, even some friends of mine are trying to sell their houses while they're high, you know? But there's no buyers, because they're too high. That'll be fixed. But as soon as people can't pay the mortgages, it'll get fixed fast. And then you'll be where you were in 2008. So that's why I'm saying all this. And I'm saying it in open meeting, because your budgets, the people back here decide them, your department heads. And if the banks don't, can't pay the taxes like the last time because you didn't collect them in advance, you're going to be stuck again. So I'm hoping you listen. I hope that people start thinking outside the box and don't get reactionary like last time, because this thing's been coming. It's been a long, slow train wreck coming, and it's coming. And I just really hope you read some of the stuff. And that King's College thing about Civil War England in here?
Mr. Harfoot, your time's up. That's the end of the speakers for the first portion.
Thank you, Bill. That takes us to the consent agenda, and the items on our consent agenda are voted all at one time, and have been scrolling on the screen prior to this meeting, and will scroll on the screen at this meeting's conclusion. Commissioners, there have been changes to the consent agenda. Number four, which pertains to the SAMSA grant from Juvenile Court, has been withdrawn. And for Community Development, there are two revisions to Agenda Items 15 and 16. 15 refers to GIS. I have the pink sheet in front of me, but I don't observe what the change is. This is district that's been added, thank you. And same with 16, it's been modified as stated Districts 2 and 4, and it's just District 4. We also have had revised attachments for Agenda Item number 19, and we have a revision to Agenda Item 24. Agenda Item 19 pertains to the Development Authority of Cobb County and its lease revenue bonds for Mount Bethel Christian Academy. And Agenda Item 24 refers to the settlement with Tyler Technologies. Commissioners, do you have anything else to observe with respect to our consent agenda as we move forward? Alright, with that, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second.
Excuse me, let me modify that motion. I'm going to again move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, but to also authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Alright, and you had a comment?
Discussion.
Yes, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, for Numbers 15 and 16, relevant to the city of Mableton, I would like to see the reporting and tracking for the billable hours that we charge them, and how is that going to be done through Community Development?
Why don't we go ahead and poll it for discussion, since this is on consent, and we can ask that and have the Director come up and speak.
Okay. Well, I guess it would be 15 and 16.
We can poll both 15 and 16. Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions? Alright, go ahead, and we'll call the question. The motion carries 4-0. You're welcome. And that now takes us to the regular portion of our meeting, and we'll begin with the two items that were just pulled off of consent under Community Development, and that pertains to the intergovernmental agreements with the city of Mableton for 15 is the GIS system, Geographic Information System, and the second one is for the zoning application review process. Good morning, Jessica. Alright, if you can help us, do you need a copy of the agenda item? Alright, Commissioner, you can go ahead and ask your questions.
Okay. Well, I understand the GIS portion, because they don't have that up and running yet, and that is the billable hourly rate of the $40.
Yes, ma'am.
But when they send us something, and it goes to, I don't know, Bragg or whoever staff, how are they going to track that to bill the hourly rate?
Okay, so we will, you know, and it'll just be for GIS. So Number 15 was the GIS agreement, Number 16, and that deals more with DOT and Water and the other departments that will also be billing. So we'll just, as we get those requests from Mableton, we will track those and we'll bill them monthly with an invoice, just like we have been doing to this point for the zoning verifications on business licenses.
Okay, and then we'll get a report, or will we have access to that?
We could provide that to you if you'd like to.
I think of a spreadsheet or something.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
And then, as this goes forward for the next year or shorter, depending on when they're up and running, will you be walking the halls and contacting us before it is a final agreement, like what we got yesterday?
So this is the agreement, so.
Right.
What final agreement?
Well, I guess SDS, when we do those, we'll know ahead of time.
And that's a separate process, right?
Right.
And service delivery strategy, as you all know, is required to be updated to incorporate the city of Mableton by May 31st, and so that's a process that right now the County Manager's Office is taking the lead on. And this process was a little bit different with the IGAs, because they have, once they say we're ready to take on the services, we have 30 days. So it's a sort of a quick window, and we've been since that time working closely with their staff to also be sure that we got the IGAs hammered out.
Okay, and I guess Drew and Judy's here, they can speak to how they're going to track the zoning requests and the 16 Agenda Item.
The, we've discussed this already internally, so we will, on bi-weekly timesheets, they will have their hours, so they'll track those hours. That will then be provided to finance for the invoicing to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. So the water system will not be charging for zoning or plan review, because we currently fund that out of our water and sewer rates, and we will continue to provide water and sewer services to their customers, so their customers are already paying for that service.
Okay. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you for your questions, Commissioner. I think it's important, this is the first time you've had a creation of a city, and this is not just any new city, but it's one with limited services that will be relying heavily on the county. So I don't think your questions or inquiries are unreasonable for us to see this process with a little bit more light, until we all get comfortable with it over time. Appreciate your questions. Are there any other comments or questions? Alright, Commissioners, I move that we approve Agenda Item 15 as it has been revised.
So moved.
Alright, is there a second? And that's a motion, but.
Oh, that was a motion?
I mean, I'll take your motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0, and I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for the zoning application review, plan review, and development inspection of Mableton as part of Agenda Item 16.
Second.
Alright, and just note the revision of that item as well. Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thanks, Commissioners. We are now at the DOT regular agenda.
Good morning again, Drew Ressler, DOT. We have nine items for your consideration on the regular tab this morning. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Acworth for Nance Road and Acworth-Dewes Road traffic study. Project number B2548. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design of Allstall Powder Springs Road Trail. Cobb County Project B2439. Approve a memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for said project. Authorize payment of a preliminary engineering oversight fee to the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of $12,000. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with HNTB Corporation in an amount not to exceed $685,000 for transportation, planning, and engineering services for East West Connector Corridor Improvement Scoping Study. Project number AR19. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under state law. Authorize commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on South Warden Road at Pisgah Road, Project number B2310. Adopt a resolution and order in form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number 1 to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Smyrna for the design and construction of slope stabilization under the Camp Highland Road Bridge, Cobb County Project number B2116. Authorize a corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is on the same project. It includes a recommendation that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $4,443,107.77 for slope stabilization on Camp Highland Road Bridge, Project number B2116. Approve change order number 1 to said contract in the deductive amount of $1,298,000. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change orders final to contracts for various completed projects in the 2016 SPOST Transportation Improvements Program Fund, 2022 SPOST Transportation Improvements Program Fund, and Water System Fund, a total savings to the projects in the amount of $743,871.23. Authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Road Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $430,931.19 for West Atlanta Road Sidewalk, Project number B2721. Authorize a corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Road Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $280,880 for drainage system repairs on Mountain Trace, Project number B22147. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, jurors.
Thank you.
That now takes us to the Support Services tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our first item this morning is a joint item with multiple departments for a five-year contract with UKG Chronos Systems LLC. This contract will allow us to transition Chronos and Telestaff to their cloud-based solutions and expand Telestaff workforce management licensing to include 911 Animal Services Police and the Sheriff's Office. This item will be partially funded by 2022 SPOST Project B0010. We are requesting your approval of the contract in a total amount not to exceed $3,322,378, under provisions of Omnia Partners Contract 18220, where Cobb County is the lead agency. Authorize a contingency fund in the amount of $10,000. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman and Procurement Director to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our second item this morning is to request your approval to reinstate and extend Contract Amendment 1 to Task Order Number 2 with Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for the ARTGIS indoor system through December 31st, 2025, 2016 SPOST Project X0020, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is under Property Management.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Property Management has one item this morning. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the use of the Sourcewell Contract Number 080420-TKE, and approve two purchase orders with Tisson Crump Elevator Incorporated in the amount of $420,770 and $799,230 for the elevator modernization of three elevators at the Cobb County Judicial Building located at 32 Rodell Street in Marietta. Establish contingencies in the amount of $21,038 and $39,961. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Angela. That now takes us to our second public comment.
I'm going to sign up in that portion.
Okay, then we are now at the Commissioner's Public Address. Commissioner Gamble, you can begin once your slides are on the screen.
Help support our youth through the Cobb PAL cleats and sports equipment drive. The Cobb Athletic League is partnering with Cobb County Police Department Community Affairs Unit for this initiative. Donate your old sports gear to help future athletes. Drop-off locations in District 1 are at Precinct 1, which is at 2380 Cobb Parkway in Kennesaw, and Precinct 5, which is at 4640 Dallas Highway in Powder Springs. And lastly, next week, we will have our Town Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the West Cobb Senior Center, which is located at 4915 Dallas Highway in Powder Springs. District 1 includes the cities of Acworth, Kennesaw, and Marietta, and then also Lost Mountain and Powder Springs cities. The event will feature an interactive Q&amp;A session centered on issues brought up by you, the public. If you want to email your topic and suggestions ahead of times, please do so at myvoice@cobbcounty.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations again to Michael Brantley. He does an awesome job and works with us and all the departments, and we couldn't do what we do without him and his team. We have adoption number 261 for Superior Pets for Patriotic Pets. Mr. Cooper here serves six years with the U.S. Marine Corps, and we appreciate him supporting this program and adopting this beautiful husky from the Cobb County Animal Shelter. Tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Rocky Mount Elementary School, 2400 Rocky Mountain Road, Marietta, DOT will be hosting a Road, Marietta, DOT will be hosting an open house for road improvements at Tricam Road and Yula Drive and Rocky Mountain Road. So we ask that the public in the area, it is near the school, the intersection is near the school, and we ask that you come out and give us your support and ideas for the improvements to be made. Going on at the Art Center, Art Place at 3330 Sandy Plains Road, Marietta, Ludmilla Harrison exhibit exhibition is open from March 11th today through April 4th, and you can meet the artists and enjoy light refreshments as you explore these vibrant artworks. Long-awaited ribbon cutting and grand opening for Cobb Police Precinct Six, April 4th at 10:00 a.m. It's behind the Aquatic Center at Mountain View. The address is actually 3141 Hong Way, Marietta. So come out and see our newest police precinct, and we will have tours as well. And March is Women History Month, and there's a lot of different celebrations going on, so be sure to honor our women in history and thank them for all they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. District Four news and updates. Here we grow again, District Four. This past week brought some exciting developments to our community. First, we celebrated the ribbon cutting for the Tesla charging station at the Riverside EpiCenter. It features 24 cutting-edge V4 superchargers designed for a range of vehicle architectures. It will be open to the public soon. Next was the Heritage Hill Shopping Plaza, AKA the Hobby Lobby Plaza, has secured a lease with Alter Beauty, adding to the great lineup of tenants like Eggs Up Grill, Floor and Decor, Tea Leaf Creamery, and of course Olive Garden, which will open in a couple of weeks. And yes, I am still working hard to bring Sprouts Farmers Market to the area, so stay tuned. And then finally, I attended a ribbon cutting for Marlo at Brookwood, a luxury apartment community, offering resort-style living with top-tier amenities, including a state-of-the-art fitness center, work-from-home spaces, and a conference room. Please visit marlobrookwood.com to book a tour. Join leaders and advocates of our community for an engaging conversation on the state of South Cobb schools. Gain valuable resources, learn advocacy tips, and hear from local leaders and experts in a powerful panel discussion. The event will take place 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Thursday, March 13th, at the South Cobb Community Center located at 620 Lions Club Drive in Mabelton. Food will be provided. Cobb County is conducting a focused study of the Factory Shoals Road and Interstate 20 area to better understand mobility and pedestrian safety needs, especially for crossing I-20 and traveling within the surrounding area along Factory Shoals Road. The study aims to develop equitable transportation, transportation access, and improve safety for all travelers. The final community open house will be 5:30 to 7:30 next Tuesday, March 18th, at the South Cobb Community Center located at 620 Lions Club Drive in Mabelton. And finally, join me, Keep Cobb Beautiful, and Kennesaw State for my District Four Annual Community Cleanup, celebrating Earth Day in America's 250th anniversary. This year, we are kicking off earlier than usual as 150 to 200 KSU students join us for beautification efforts, including yard work for local seniors. Since 2022, this event has raised awareness about litter and its environmental impact on our community. We'll start at 10:00 a.m. with light breakfast, coffee, and fellowship, plus door prize giveaways sponsored by Keep Cobb Beautiful. Lunch and supplies will be provided. Let's tackle litter together to keep District Four clean. Email emily.dempsey@cobcounty.org to register for the event. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, all of you, for joining us today. We do have one other matter that will be on our agenda, and that is for our community development hearing with respect to a beer, wine, and Sunday sales package license. You are more than welcome to remain here for this hearing. However, we're going to take a break until 10:00 a.m. before that hearing begins. Again, thank you for joining us.
Good morning and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this March 11th, 2025. We have a hearing before us with respect to an alcohol beverage license for Vape Vibes. And I will turn things over to Attorney Sam Hensley to walk us through today's session.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager, Mr. County Attorney. I am Sam Hensley Jr. For the record, as the attorney for the Business License Division of Cobb County. As you mentioned, Madam Chairwoman, there is an application before this board for Vape Vibes LLC, doing business as Vape Vibes, located at 4968 Austell Road, Mableton, Georgia 30106. Mr. Rohil Hada, licensee. I should mention at the outset that this establishment is not, or will not be, in Incorporated Cobb County, as my witness will explain, and as I'm sure the county is aware. It's, the City of Mableton is being established or is established, but there's still an issue of taking over regulatory duties, which my understanding is will be happening on June the 1st. So that may be a consideration for the board as well as we go forward. But currently, it is the responsibility of this county to respond to the application for this license. The application for beer and wine sales was administratively denied due to a distance violation under Section 6-124 of the Cobb County Alcohol Code. And just for the record, I know the board is well aware of those requirements, but I do want to state them aloud, that in the event that there is a distance violation that places the establishment, or the proposed establishment, to sell alcohol within a 300-foot radius of the property line of a private residence, an appeal may be filed, which it was in a timely manner, to the License Review Board. And at that hearing, if there's a determination that the property values of the residence or residences will not be affected, that the quiet enjoyment of the premises by the residents thereof shall not be adversely affected, and that the grant of such license shall have no other adverse effect on the residence, then the License Review Board or the Board of Commissioners may waive this provision of this section and grant a distance waiver and therefore grant the alcohol license. This denial was appealed to the License Review Board, which heard this appeal on October the 17th of last year, 2024. And at that time, the LRB voted unanimously to approve the application. Now, as you know, such approvals must be ratified by this board. And that comes under Section 6-90F of the Cobb Alcohol Code. And then, just for the record, that section reads that the Board of Commissioners shall review a summary of the hearing before the License Review Board within 30 days of the date of the License Review Board's recommendation to waive distance requirements under 6-124 or 6-125, or direct the Business License Division Manager to place the matter down for a hearing and take any authorized action concerning the applicant's requested license, and that hearing being before the Board of Commissioners. That's what brings us here today, Madam Chairwoman. We did originally schedule this hearing for February 11th of this year. However, there was an issue of notice to the applicant and some staff conflicts, so it got rescheduled to today. I did spoke to the applicant, or did speak to the applicant before the meeting. He is not represented by counsel, but he has been apprised of what our procedures are. So with your permission, I, at this time, will swear in the witnesses and call my first witness in this case.
All right, go right ahead. Thank you.
If you'll be testifying in this hearing, or may, or you believe you may be testifying, would you stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say, "I do." Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to call Alicia Webb.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Could you state your full name for the record, please?
Alicia Webb.
And where are you employed, Ms. Webb?
I am the Business License Division Manager.
And is that in Cobb County?
Yes, sir.
And how long have you been in that position?
I've been in this position for six years.
And before that, were you employed by the Business License Division as well?
Yes, I've been in the division for 18 years.
And briefly describe for us what your duties are as the Business License Division Manager, please.
As it relates to alcohol, we accept the applications, we review alcohol applications. It's then reviewed by the Police Department, comes back to me for the final approval and/or denial. And in this case, the denial because of distance.
So you are familiar with Vape Vibes LLC, doing business as Vape Vibes?
Yes, sir.
And when did you receive that application in your office?
The original application was received in my office in August of '24.
And at that time, did you determine there were any disqualifiers for this application?
The application was officially denied on September the 23rd.
And on what basis?
Violation of 6-124 of the code, the entrance of the establishments less than 300 feet to the nearest residential property line.
And how is that determined? Does the applicant supply a survey, or what happens for your office to determine if there's a violation of that distance requirement?
Yes, sir. Survey from a certified surveyor is submitted to our office disclosing the distance to the nearest church, park, school, library, and residence.
And were there other, any other disqualifiers for this application?
No, sir.
And what kind of establishment is this?
My understanding is it's a convenience store.
Okay. And this was an application for a beer and wine package sales, is that correct?
Beer, wine, Sunday sales, and a convenience store. Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Chairwoman, I do want to, in the interest of perfecting the record of this case, introduce a couple of certified copies of the relevant ordinances.
Okay.
This is a certified copy. Can you briefly tell us what these certified copies are?
6-90 of the Cobb County Alcohol Code relating to License Review Board and BOC's decisions, and then Chapter 6-124, the distance requirements to residents.
And did you obtain those from the county clerk yourself?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer those into evidence to be included in the record, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay.
So this matter came before the License Review Board, did it not, Ms. Webb?
Yes, sir.
And at that time, there was a vote taken. What was the decision of the License Review Board at that hearing?
The License Review Board voted to issue the distance waiver and grant the license.
Now, after that occurred, you submitted a summary of their decision to the Board of Commissioners. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what was the result of that summary, or that review of that summary by this board?
We were directed by the District Commissioner to schedule a hearing before the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you.
Mr. Haddad? You have the right to cross-examine. Oh, sorry. Were you done, Mr. Hensley? I thought you said you were done.
Yes.
Okay. You have the right to cross-examine Ms. Webb, if you're here to, if you have any questions. You're good?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
It's just hopeful if he can just, just to make sure we get that statement on the record. I know you didn't have a mic when you stated that, but I just wanted to be clear to make sure you have your due process.
I do not have any questions for Ms. Webb. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I do, but I don't know if you should be with him. You said that this is a convenience store?
Yes, ma'am. The application was submitted for a convenience store.
Okay, because the name sounds like it's a retail store for vaping products.
They do have vape products.
But it's a convenience store with other things, too?
That's my understanding. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, as a follow-up question to that. Now, you have me wondering.
I know.
And forgive me for not knowing when this is always applied. But sometimes we look at the receipt or sales of alcohol with respect to the receipt or sales for other food items. Is that just for a restaurant, Alicia?
Yes. That's when the food versus alcohol is considered, yes, ma'am. It's an pouring establishment, instead of, in this case, it's consumption off-premise.
Okay, it's not for other establishments? For instance, if somebody is selling beer or alcohol at a convenience store, at a supermarket? Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions, Commissioner Gamble?
Has there been a license issued to this establishment before for this purpose?
No.
Are there any other questions?
I have a couple of follow-up questions, if you don't mind, Madam Chairwoman, too. Are there any other establishments in this plaza or shopping center where this establishment is located that have been given alcohol licenses in the past?
Yes, sir.
Did any of those require a waiver of a distance requirement, to your recollection?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Brown?
But in the book, it's a rest, they're restaurants that are...
I'm sorry?
In the book, the closest...
One family owns a market and a restaurant in that shopping center. One tenant space is a market, and the other tenant space is their restaurant.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chairwoman. Can I, just for assistance?
Please.
Mr. Hensley, are we planning on submitting the, what Mr. Burrow referred to as as the site plan with the maps? Can we use that for her to be able to refer to it? Do you have that, Ms. Webb, in order for you to be able to, is that going to be submitted as part of the record?
The survey?
Yes.
I think it's in the packet, or I thought it was.
Bill was the packet. Is this considered part of the record?
I want to see if Mr. Hensley's planning on introducing that, yes.
Absolutely. Everything in the application should be part of the record.
Okay.
Everything in the agenda packet should be part of the record. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Webb might be able to point out where those locations are on that survey? I don't know if we could, we could pull that up or not?
You want to put it on a projector? Okay. And while, oh, pardon me. And while she's doing that, I'm sending photos to you guys, because I stopped by to visit the location. So I have some photos that I'm sending to you guys for your review.
I think I'm okay. So I don't know if, I'm pretty sure most of you are familiar with the shopping center. It's at the corner of Clay and Austell Road. This tenant space for Vape Vibes is at the end, the shaded part. The restaurant and the market fall just about dead center of the shopping center. It was previously a carpet store or a flooring store. Now it's two spaces that one side occupies, the restaurant and the other side is their grocery store. But it's about midway in the shopping center.
And it's 300 feet? Less than 300 feet from the residence?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that Jerez Mexican Market?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about Austell Shell?
Austell Shell is not close. It's down, it's the closest, but it's not very close at all to that.
So it doesn't have a distance waiver?
No.
Okay. And then what about Ayo African Restaurant?
These two are further down Austell Road, and neither of them, I don't recall Ayo having to have one at this tenant space either. They're almost there, right on the line of the City of Austell.
Okay. So then, besides Jerez Mexican Market, what is the other restaurant or convenience store that has a waiver of 300 feet?
Jerez Restaurant.
That's the only one?
Mm-hmm. Silicon Net. So Jerez Mexican Taqueria is the closest, and then their market, so the...
Oh, there's two different, okay, I see.
So the closest is going to be the Taqueria, but then the market's in the same shopping center.
Okay. It's right next door to the...
Yes, they're side by side. Yes, ma'am.
The suite, yeah. And both, both those are 300, less than 300 feet from the closest residence? Okay. And they're the same owner, I'm assuming, in the two suites?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
I just have a technical question for Mr. Rawlings. Commissioner Sheffield, I know you sent us photos of the location, but how do we make sure the applicant sees them and they're entered as part of the record?
I would assume at some point in time Commissioner Sheffield's going to ask the applicant regarding that, but until then, the other, she probably should not be considered or reviewed or looked at. But she, it would have to be supported by a witness, and I would assume that she would do that through the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Alicia Webb? Thank you.
That's all the witnesses I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll turn things over to the applicant. And so you can just share with us general information about your store. You can introduce it to us as if we have not seen information about it.
Sure. First of all, good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me here. Apologize for last month's mix-up. For some reason, I never got the notifications, so here I am today. My name is Rohil Hada. I am the primary applicant for the beer and wine license. We own, I own Vape Vibes LLC, which is located at 4968 Austell Road. This is the, if you are looking at the store, it is the first, the first section of the shopping center on the left-hand side. We sell, a majority of our products that we are selling over there is vape products, but we do have convenience store products as well, like chips and candies, sodas, and water, gate rate, stuff like that. And we are applying for beer and wine license so that we can add one more product to our list. So that helps us with the sales and to keep up with the, you know, with the rents and all of our expenses. So that's, that's just a general presentation of this. As Ms. Webb presented, that we were approved by the Review Board initially. They granted us the waiver, because we already had somebody in the center who was also granted the waiver. And we have, we have assured that, you know, our employees are already trained on how to serve alcohol, and, you know, we have the training certificates for our employees as well to make sure that they are not serving it to any underage or things like that. So we have done those trainings to be, you know, to be ready for it, basically. If there is any questions for me, I would love to answer.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a few cross-examination questions, if I may, unless the board wishes.
Yes, I am, I'm trying to understand the process. So when Alicia was here, you asked her questions, then there was cross-examination, then the board asked questions. So before the board asked questions, we'll permit cross-examination, unless there's anything else you'd like to share.
That's it.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So you indicated that your establishment is a convenience store, is that correct?
Yes.
And what's the square footage of your establishment?
Approximately 3100. I don't remember exact.
Okay. And you're seeking a beer and wine package license, is that correct?
Not the, so what is the package license? Like, I'm not trying to sell liquor, just beer and wine.
Well, that's why I said beer and wine. Yeah, not, not liquor. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. What else did you say you sell in your establishment?
We sell grocery items like chips, you know, some deodorants, water, cookies, candies, and other, you know, other grocery store items. We have a couple of aisles for that. We sell water, gate rate, soft drinks, and all of those things as well.
But the name of the establishment is Vape Vibes. Do you sell tobacco products?
Yes, we do sell tobacco products. Yes, we do sell tobacco products. Initially, it was, it was designed to be a vape store or tobacco store. But then we, we were able to secure a bigger place. Initially, we only were supposed to have 1,400 square foot. But then they had more space available, so we just got the whole space and we decided to do a convenience store with the vape store, not only vape store. And hence, I'm here to add one more aspect to that.
So what percentage of your sales would you say are the vape products compared to the other grocery items?
I would say about 60% or so is vape products and others is about 40% between the rest of it.
And do you sell any THC products of any kind?
Yes, we do sell that, but within the limits, because the law was recently changed and there were certain products which are banned. So we have, you know, changed down to the products which are allowed to sell now.
Any THC-infused beverages?
Yes, we do sell that.
And what about gaming machines? Do you have any of those on your establishment?
Yes, we do have that.
What kind of gaming machines are they?
They are coin-operated gaming machines, like slot machines.
And who regulates those types of gaming machines in an establishment such as yours?
Can you repeat the question?
Who, what body or entity or government department?
Georgia Lottery.
The Georgia Lottery?
Yes.
Have they inspected the gaming machines that you have on your, on your premises?
Yes, yes, and they have a, they have a system in place, it's called Intralock. So they monitor all of our transactions on the gaming machine and everything is monitored by them. And they have the reports to them weekly and we have to report our sales to them as well.
That's all I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Burrow? Commissioner Sheffield, since it's, I'll let you go ahead first and then we'll go to Commissioner Burrow.
Bill, would you advise that I share the photos at this point before I begin my questions to the applicant?
You can ask the applicant about the questions, if you're able to do that. I don't know if you have them printed off?
Well, I'm sorry, the photos, did I say questions, I mean photos.
The photos.
Before I share the photos, yeah.
Yeah, to the, to the, you can share the photos with the applicant and then you're allowed to be able to introduce them in so the, so the board can then consider them.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, Brad can put it on the screen so everybody's following.
Yes, that would be great, yes.
So, this is a photo from the vantage point of the game room. To the left, you'll see that there's the items that you mentioned, the potato chips, cookies and things of that nature. And along the wall to the rear, you'll see a bunch of CDB products. And what you can't see is a shelf towards the bottom, right, that has additional products. And to the left, where you see the tobacco sign, that's actually at the front door. So as you come in the front door, yeah, thank you, Brad, there is like a boiled peanut stand to the far left. And as you walk in, you have the tobacco products to, to your left as you walk in. You can slide to the next photo.
Commissioner, if we...
Yeah.
We need to have Mr. Haddid actually testify to this? Could you ask him if he recognizes this place and then describe it? This is a picture of, of his location.
Okay, do you recognize this place?
Yes, ma'am.
As your location?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you recognize the items in the photos?
Yes, ma'am.
As being at your location? Thanks, Bill. And this is just a close-up shot of some of the, I guess, what's being described as food items?
Yes, ma'am.
At the convenience store, okay? And Brad, if you just go to the next photo, I think is where, okay, that's it, yeah. Okay. Yeah, there were three. Because on one of the photos, and I can come... Pardon me, guys, I just want to make sure that...
Here it is.
Okay, that's it. So on this photo, do you recognize this photo and the items in this photo as being at your establishment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so these are the items, I guess, also being described as food items for purposes of a convenience store. It goes from, you know, the end of the shelf, it looks to be a few canned good items. And literally, it stops before you get to more hygiene items and detergent, et cetera, at the bottom. Do you recognize any of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thanks, Brad, that, that's good. I just wanted to share those photos with everyone. So I, I do have a few questions that I'll take directly from your application, actually, they're clarification questions. And do you have a copy of your application with you?
Not on me right now, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Let's make sure, let's get that in front of you as she answers questions.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Excuse me, Angela, are you able to provide him a copy or, okay, thank you. The questionnaire, he should get, he should get a copy of the questionnaire.
It's on the backside of that. Okay. Do you see question number seven? Do you have a copy of question number seven? Okay. Could you please expound on how the business would contribute positively to the community vibrancy?
So basically, the idea is that when, when we, when we started the business in the shopping center, it was kind of a very dead shopping center and it has now come to life, you know, with a lot of people coming in there with Jerez Food Market and the Mexican restaurant and all of that. So the idea was that if we add alcohol to our, to our product too, that will invite more people to the, will invite more people to the shopping center and that brings, you know, more life to the shopping center. So that was the idea.
Okay, thank you. And then question number eight, the following question. You referenced our community and I was just curious if you lived in the area?
No, I live in Tucker.
Pardon?
I live in Tucker, Georgia.
Oh, you live in Tucker, okay, okay, thank you. Question number 10, you pretty much answered it in that the majority or most of the merchants I sold at the store are vape items.
Yes.
Okay. Clarification on number 20. It has your hours as seven days a week for 12 hours. What are the hours per day?
So I think at the time of application, we were doing from 11:00 to 11:00. Now we have actually changed our hours from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., so it's now 13 hours. It has been updated.
10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., okay. And number 25, you referenced compliance with all applicable laws and you talked about the gaming machine earlier and that the Georgia Lottery is monitoring that.
Yes, ma'am.
When I visited the property, I didn't see, and Bill helped me with this legally, or Sam, I don't know if, if Georgia Lottery is regulating, would it have some type of sticker or notification? Okay.
Ms. Webb might, might know that, I don't know.
Would you happen to know or anyone happen to know that?
On the microphone, please.
Yeah, when I visited the property, there, there's, there's a game room there and I didn't see any decals or notification with Georgia Lottery. Usually when you go into a convenience store, you'll see Georgia Lottery decals or stickers and I didn't see that at the gaming room. And my question is whether or not that is a requirement or if you know whether or not that would be a requirement to post at the game room.
I know that the lottery regulates them and there's a system that ties the gaming machines to the Georgia Lottery, but as far as a decal, I'm not positive about that.
I was just wondering for the general public, for the public to be aware that it's being regulated. I just wasn't sure if it was a requirement of any sort because I did not see one there.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they require a decal or a sticker on the machines.
Okay.
Can, can I?
Yeah, yes, please.
So as far as my knowledge goes, we are not required to put any decals on that, but it is of very common knowledge that the machines are, you know, monitored by Georgia Lottery. And just for the council to know, we are trying to apply for Lotto license as well. Our Quem license was approved, but lottery license was denied because initially, when we started, our sales were low and we had to have minimum of 30,000 plus in sales for Georgia Lottery to grant us any lottery and the machines and all of that. So we are applying for that as well. And part of the reason, we are right now hovering around 28,000 to 30,000 and part of the reason adding this is to boost up our sales so we can add another aspect to it, which is the lottery tickets and, you know, the scratch-off tickets and the bar balls and the Mega Millions and all of those things. So that is one of the next steps that we are working towards as we bring our sales to the place, to the point.
Okay. And, and one final question, on your application, the application was submitted as a convenience store and vape shop. So in reading the application, you know, my original thought is that it is a convenience store that sell vape products, but it's actually the other way around. And it seems to me that it's more of a specialty retail store for vape products.
You can put it that way, but we are trying to get towards convenience store. Like, you know, in convenience store, we need alcohol beverages, we need regular beverages, we need all of those things. And we can add like coffees and stuff like that. Part of the reason we are, we're taking our steps towards becoming, I guess, a proper convenience store, which, which add all the facets like Lotto and everything like that. So that's what we are trying to do. Like I said, initially, our plan was to go as a vape store and that's how our branding and how our whole business plan was. But then we were able to get a bigger space and since then, it's, it's like a secondary thought of making it into a convenience store and, you know, going with the convenience store rather than just the vape shop. So we just piggyback on what we already have, like we had the licenses and everything under the vape vibe. And we just started expanding that to turn it into a convenience store. So that, that was the whole idea.
Okay, so in your testimony just now, you communicated some additional convenience store items. You mentioned beer and...
Coffee.
Coffee and, and alcohol. But, you know, when, when I think of the convenience store, I'm also thinking of more items, more food items that maybe perhaps a person cannot get to a full, a full supermarket, right? So they'll go to a convenience store and there you expect to see perhaps milk, eggs, those type of products.
So that is also part of, part of our plan. We are also planning to apply for food stamps and EBT as well. And those, those are the requirements, like we need to have food items like milk and, you know, sausages or, you know, things like that, right? All, we have frozen food items and stuff like that. And we want to put those things in there, but right now our sales are low and we are trying to increase footfall to our, to our space. Once we have enough footfall, then adding those things makes sense because milk and egg and all of those things are on such a short, they have a very, less expiry days, right? So because of their shelf life, we are just not adding those products because then that just adds to more expired products and it just, you know, it causes a lot of loss to the business. So we are just trying to take steps towards increasing the footfall to our store. And as we do that, we will, you know, add more, like, you know, and that's why we are targeting Lotto license, we are targeting beer and wine because those are the crowd pullers. They, they help people come in because right now we have a lot of walking people who come in and they ask for, do you guys have beer or wine or do you guys have Lotto? And we are like, oh, no, we are still applying. So once we have those things and we have some more business come in, then that would be our, you know, the next step or business plan that, you know, start adding more food items, start adding more things to our store. Like, we don't have coffee right now, but having coffee, we open at 10:00 o'clock. So having coffee at 10:00 o'clock doesn't really help, you know, having coffee at 6:00 o'clock helps. So, so we, we are basically trying to move our timing back to where, you know, we can be open at 6:00 or 7:00 when it becomes a proper convenience store. And then at that point, we may have some, you know, breakfast items where, which can be warmed up in the microwave and they can, you know, take it with them and stuff like that. So that's, that's the eventual goal, to get to that point.
Okay, okay, thank you. That, that's all I have for now. Commissioner Burrow?
How long have you been open at this location?
We started in July of last year, so about eight months now.
Okay, and the gaming room that you, that Commissioner Sheffield's referring to, is it a separate room? With a door and...
There is no door, there is just a walkway and then we have the game machines in the back.
Okay, but they're not your normal Lotto tickets?
No, no, we were denied that by Georgia Lottery because they have a certain limits to your grocery and your regular sales. Until we have that, they would not approve. We were denied because of the reason that we don't have enough sales in the store. So once we increase our sales past 30,000 or 35,000, at that point, we can reapply and then we can try and get that added to our store.
And here, here's a photo at, of the entrance to the game room. Do you recognize that as being at your location?
Yes, ma'am.
And it has a door frame and it appears to have a lock, but there is no door.
Yeah, we had to take it out because that's one of the regulations that you cannot have a locked-up door.
Yeah.
So we took out the door and we just left it as is.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then that, that's the inside of the room. I don't know that there are video games. He mentioned slot machines, and there are cash payouts at this machine, at those machines.
And no cash payouts.
There are not cash payouts at this machine, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, Commissioner Gamble?
So is this your first convenience store that you've opened?
This is my second. I have a partnership in one store in Columbus, Georgia, as well.
Okay, and did you go through the same process?
No, that was actually a gas station with a convenience store that we bought. So that was a proper convenience store with the fuel pumps. And this was just, it was our first vape store, which then, which is now converting into a convenience store, so.
Are there any other questions?
Just for clarification, you mentioned that this is a vape store that you're turning into a convenience store.
Yeah, like I mentioned before that, you know, initially, we had a smaller space and then we got bigger space, so we started making it into a proper convenience store, so.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much.
Am I allowed to go?
Yes, you are. Don't go out the room, but you're allowed to have a seat.
Thank you.
I have nothing further, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to make a closing and I'll reserve mine to the end.
Okay, thank you. So sir, at this time, you're allowed to make a closing statement. You can do that there or you can use the microphone and do it from where you were seated.
The timer is on the, on the podium, if you want to watch the timer, you actually have 13 minutes, so.
Righty, so again, thank you so much for having me here and listening to my appeal and my case. I really appreciate everybody's input. I appreciate, you know, the council and Ms. Webb's input to the whole thing. And I just hope that you guys consider our application because, you know, we are really trying to, you know, establish this as a proper convenience store and add more sales to our, you know, to our business. So this would be a very helpful step in that direction. So I would really appreciate if we are considered for the beer and wine license. Thank you so much.
I'll be brief, Madam Chairwoman. Just as a reminder, we've had a lot of discussion about the character of this establishment, the types of things that are sold. To my knowledge, the only requirement under our code to qualify as a convenience store is a limit of 5,000 square feet in the total square footage of the establishment.
Thank you.
So you can sell a variety of items, whether they be vape, as long as those are legal under the laws and the regulations that the county does not impose.
Thank you.
The only thing we are regulating is the alcohol part of this. And again, as a reminder... And again, as a reminder, under six dash one twenty-four, there's a prohibition. No license under this chapter shall be issued to any location which is in a, within a three-hundred-foot radius of a residence. However, that can be waived, but there are three criteria that must be met. Number one, the property values of the resident or residences will not be affected. The quiet enjoyment of the premises by the residents thereof shall not be adversely affected. And the grant of such license shall have no other adverse effect on the residents.
Okay.
Now, there has been some discussion about adverse effects. So, what is up to the board to do is to, that's the operative phrase. At a public hearing, the Board of Commissioners shall determine. So, that goes to the weight of the evidence. What have you heard? Does that convince you that these requirements, these criteria have been met?
Thank you.
In the absence of such a determination, then you can't grant the waiver. However, there also does come into play, and there's been discussion about the other establishment in this, uh, shopping center, uh, an equal protection consideration. If that has been granted to other people, other establishments, other entities that are similarly located in a similar situation, then you have to treat everybody as we equally as possible. So, that, that has to weigh into the decision as well. Uh, but those are the only other remarks that I would have. I think we've covered the ground well as to what's in this establishment and what he's trying to accomplish. So, with that, I will leave it in the good judgment of this board.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'll turn things over to the District Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Sam and Alicia, for your work on this and also to the applicant. Thank you, Sam, also for sharing again or reminding us of the criteria that needs to be met, um, for our consideration of this waiver. But one that stands out to me the most is no other adverse effects. When I visited the, the location and looking at the application and reviewing the application, I walked in with the thought, and I appreciate your testimony and sharing with us your timeframe, but I walked in with the thought of finding a convenience store that would at the very least have more convenience store items than it would the vape items. And based on your testimony, it sounds that, it sounds as though it's the vape items and if this waiver is granted, the alcohol, um, between the vape products and the alcohol, that will bring more foot traffic in with the hopes of possibly purchasing convenience store items. It's what, what it sounds like to me. While I understand the equal protection and there is also a supermarket and restaurant in the same plaza, just a few suites down, that, um, received a waiver, a distance waiver for the three hundred feet from, from the residence. One of those locations is a sit-down restaurant where it is, uh, monitored. And of course, the other is a convenience store that, you know, have convenience store items maybe similar to yours or have more items that they offer than what you currently offer. But I understand there is a plan for you to offer more. We don't regulate gaming. That's done by the lottery. However, it will draw in, and I think this is a part of your plan. It will draw in more customers. That may adversely affect the quiet enjoyment of the resident that live, I think it was two hundred and twenty-seven feet away from this establishment. So, there are definitely some items for me to consider with this request. And, um, I am a little concerned, um, that I don't know over time, you know, with the convenience store part of it. I, I'm just not sure, you know, if, excuse me, if over time, how much or how many items you will have there. But that's not for me to consider, I understand that. But I'm just kind of thinking this through as I talk. But I do thank you for joining us today and, uh, sharing additional information and context regarding your, your, um, your business. But after reviewing the application and considering, uh, your testimony and also my visit to the location, I, I've made a decision to uphold the distance requirement as set forth in section six dash one-two-four of the county's ordinance. And I'm prepared to make a motion, Chair. I make a motion to uphold the administrative denial of the application for an alcohol beverage license pursuant to section six dash one-two-four distance requirement from a residence.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second and discussion or question? This might be for, I don't know, staff, but this is in the city limits of Mableton. Um, do we n- do we not have a date of when they will be up and running with their alcohol licenses?
Yes, ma'am, this tenant space, the shopping center, is in the city of Mableton. Our understanding is, is by June first. They have to take over all things. They haven't as of yet, but we don't have any, not any, um, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm not so sure that exactly it's going to happen on June first, but that's the plan. We have to regulate it until then, all alcohol.
Well, so, he, he could, once they're operating their own license, he can apply at any time? I mean, if this is denied today, he doesn't have to wait a year or whatever? He can go to Mableton as soon as they're open?
Yes.
For...
Unless they're ordinance states otherwise. But if something happened today, we have no regulatory authority over this entity. They would have to go to the city of Mableton.
Okay. But he would, he would just apply till the end of the year and then would have to renew January, right?
Yes, if you were to go through with this in Mableton, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm not really comfortable making a decision today on this when it's in the city limits and they'll be doing their...
Excuse me, yes, just keep your mic on if you're going to continue to comment.
Okay. Well, you know, until they take it over, I'm still responsible for making the decisions for the area, much like we did with zoning. So, until we receive official notification from Mableton, then I still have to review this application and make a decision on it. You make a valid point that once Mableton takes over, then the applicant is free to reapply with the city of Mableton. But as it stands today with my decision as the District Commissioner, I uphold, um, the administrative denial of the application. But I understand.
Are there any other comments?
I do have a comment. It's my understanding from what I heard here today that you have been a vaping store that has expanded your offerings over time and is looking to continue to expand those offerings. And I can tell you that on its face, vaping may not be viewed positively. But there are other elements that we do permit in our community, which many people may not view positively. And these things are taken into consideration in our code to permit these uses. When I consider these hearings, I consider the adverse impact of these uses. And while we consider the equal protection ordinances with other uses, I'm often concerned when there's such a great confluence of uses in a community that it generally characterizes a community as something that's not, that's not positive and it introduces some elements that can have a general adverse impact in the community. This is not what I'm observing here. You came in as a vape store looking to add convenience items and you're looking to be profitable. And I must admit, from all the convenience stores that I've gone into, I have yet to ever see one look that neat, ever, ever. I appreciate the element of pride that you've taken in how you've maintained your store. Love the name to be different, but that's not, that's me. But I can see that by adding some other needs to the community, we talked about the food items, but also saw feminine hygiene items, that I can see that you're being responsive to what may be actual needs that may not be there. And I appreciate that. Again, typically, I look at the vulnerability of a community and the confluence of uses and I consider challenges. I just have not seen evidence to make me perceive that you would have an adverse impact in the community. And I think it's a stretch to perceive that all gaming machines could impact quiet enjoyment or else why would Georgia Lottery ever have gaming machines? They are, um, unfortunately, I've dealt with gaming machines that have not been properly regulated. And I've never heard of them not impacting quality or quiet enjoyment in an adverse way. We just didn't want to facilitate illegal activity in that site. In fact, it was co-located in a, next to a restaurant that was determined to be the best barbecue restaurant in all of Atlanta. So, those two uses were able to coexist, not impair that business and not impair the neighborhood as much as it was just a legal activity that couldn't be supported. Uh, I'm, I'm looking here and one thing I haven't observed and I've... No closing statements are done and we're contemplating things as a board. When we just see these applications that are in our book, it doesn't necessarily come with, um, backup that substantiates why a waiver should be denied. Like, I don't see in my book where property values would not be impacted when we grant those waivers or that, I don't see any substantiation of quiet enjoyment or I don't see any evidence that there would not be any other adverse impacts. I just have some questions on burden that I can talk to you after, um, the meeting about, and I say you, I'm talking to Attorney Hemsley. But I, I've just not heard, I, I've, and I have not heard the adverse impact. And again, I don't think you've, but I don't think you've tried, and I say you, I'm talking now to the applicant. I don't think the applicant has tried to be deceptive in any way. I think, um, the expansion of uses is something that I think is desirable, to see that be more of a store that is responsive to the needs of our community. And maybe those things become so great that there is a name change that reflects those other uses, but, you know, and that's just my preference because, again, I'm not a fan of vaping and the impact that it can have, both health, but that may be a personal bias and I'm sure you wouldn't be in that business if everybody agreed with me. Unfortunately, I, I can't support the motion before us. So, with that, are there any other comments? We'll call the question. The motion does not move forward. Um, there is a two-two vote. And I don't think we've had the circumstance, Bill.
The board can entertain another motion. There was a motion to affirm the decision of, um, Ms. Webb. There could be another motion if the board wants to entertain, which would be to, uh, approve the granting of the license.
Okay. And maybe it wasn't clear to me when you said to affirm the motion of Ms. Webb, I maybe have missed the motion from Ms. Webb.
That was the, that was the motion from Commissioner Sheffield, was to affirm the initial denial, which is based upon the distance issue, so.
Okay, so, we just had a motion on, we just had a vote on that motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And now the board can entertain another motion.
Okay, I, I didn't...
Regarding the, the, the other outcome of that, so.
Okay. Commissioners, or Commissioner Sheffield, is there another motion you'd like to put on the floor?
This is a motion to...
Well, you don't have to make it. I mean, there might be another, another board member that wants to make it.
I just wanted to defer to her first before I consider something else. I guess I'm a little unclear on the instructions, Bill, would you mind?
The item still stays before the board since it ended in a two-two tie. And that was ultimately not to grant the alcohol license. If another commissioner or yourself wants to make another motion to allow to waive the distance waiver and it receives a second, then there could be a vote in favor of that.
Okay, well, I won't make that motion.
So, with the two-two tie, this is pending until somebody either changes their vote up here or we get a fifth commissioner to, to swing the vote, one way or the other. By that time, Mableton may be up and running with their license. So, um, if nobody's changing their vote up here, it just fails, um, to pass and it's still hanging out there.
I mean, I can't predict the future. I mean, if, if there was such, such a motion and it wound up like that, then that would be the reality. It, it isn't until that happens, so. Or there could be an alternative motion that's presented instead.
It could be what?
There could be an alternative motion that could be presented as well, so.
Well, that's what I would offer as a motion.
An alternative motion?
To, to hold it or keep it pending until, um, we get a majority.
Or until Mableton takes over, whichever comes first. And that may or may not be by the deadline of May thirty-first or June first, so. Commissioner Gamble.
I'm a little surprised that there is no one here from the city of Mableton. And Commissioner Sheffield, I understand you have the jurisdiction over the area, even though this is within the city boundaries. I'm a little surprised we haven't heard from the city of Mableton as to this application, knowing that in, come June first, it is their responsibility. So, I'm just a little surprised that we haven't had a, because I know Ms. Webb did not submit any application, any notices or emails in support or opposition of this application. None of that was entered for the record. So, to me, you know, the community hasn't weighed in on this. So, then the question is, is it, is it right to assume that they support it? I don't know, but I, if, if, if we're worried about, you know, the city of Mableton coming in and taking effect as a... and taking effect as of June 1st, why didn't they weigh in? And I know you might not be able to answer that, but I don't know if we have any more hearings before June 1st scheduled, but it might be nice if they would weigh in.
Yeah, well, I don't know why they hadn't weighed in. They may not be aware of the hearing today. I'm not sure. I have not been in contact with anyone there at the city of Mableton. But with respect to supporting or being in opposition of the application, I still bring with me the community's support and/or opposition to these decisions. So, you know, while we may not have received an email or anything in writing, there's conversations that I have with the community with respect to what's desired in the community, and I'm not saying that my decision is based on that, I'm just directly addressing the comment regarding any opposition or support of the application. But as far as Mableton not being here, I'm not sure. I hadn't talked to anyone there.
And while I understand you might be having, you know, meetings with your constituents within the community, we are only able to consider what is in the law.
Right, which is what I communicated.
And while the applicant did not meet the distance requirement, we know that there is another establishment within this same location that was granted the waiver.
Mm-hmm.
So that was why my decision, you know, to, there's...
If I may, Madam Chairwoman, we may have a resolution to this if Mr. Hoddle will come forward here. I believe he intends to make a motion to withdraw his application at this point, and I'll let him speak for himself, but I think that would be pending, I guess, either the seating of another commissioner, which we're having a runoff election today to determine that, if I'm not mistaken.
For the primary.
The primary. We still got to go to the generals, so that's going to be a while.
The general, April 29th, yes.
Or if and when, and this is still supposition, city of Mableton takes over the regulatory authority in this, but I'll let Mr. Hoddle speak to that.
Again, thank you, everybody, for their support, and if your concerns, I understand that part. And like Attorney said, that I would like to withdraw the application so that we don't have the, I guess, roadblock, and I would like to retry if and when we have either a fifth commissioner or when city of Mableton takes over, and then I can present my case to them.
Thank you. With that, then, Commissioners, I move that we allow the applicant to withdraw his application without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. That concludes our Board of Commissioners meeting today.